Meeting for December 2, 2014. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Trustee Erns?
Yes.
Camerer?
Here.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Still here.
Ranky?
Here.
Shipman?
Here.
President Wallace?
Here. First item on our committee meeting this evening is under planning and zoning. Chairman Camerer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Under planning and zoning this evening, we have downtown TIF redevelopment plan and eligibility report, of which I am going to now turn over to Jim and let him expand, expound on what's going on.
Thank you, Justice Camerer. We have with us our consultants on this project from Kane McKenna, Bob Ruschlikie, and Chuck Durham. And Chuck is very appreciative of working for the village since he's a village resident and he doesn't have to drive too far for a night meeting. This project, as you are, as you know, came out of the village's strategic plan of attracting and retaining a diverse business population. In addition, our economic development commission in their recommendations for improving the downtown area listed creating a TIF district as one of their recommended goals for, for the downtown area. I will be brief, and then Chuck and Bob will be here to answer any and all of your questions. I've just put up a few slides from the TIF report. They give, have provided a redevelopment plan, which is going to guide, if the TIF is created, will guide the development and dispersment of funds and what projects and things we would spend the TIF revenues on. And there's also an attachment to that redevelopment plan of an eligibility report, which they went through to determine if the TIF area in question was eligible. And in fact, their findings were that it was under what they call a conservation TIF. The map on the wall shows the proposed area that was studied. It's larger, as you can see, than our original TIF. Our original TIF district was primarily in the area centered by Main Street and Railroad Avenue and going north and south, south on Main and north on Oak. And we've included and expanded eastward to include the Flexonics property, as well as the commercial area along Prospect or Wilmington Drive on both sides. So that's what we've expanded it to. There's over 100 properties in there, and they, they studied all of the properties and created the report. The redevelopment plan has seven goals to, in its proposed, in the draft, sustain and enhance the Bartlett downtown area, improvement augment the overall land use mix, attract new shopping and service business opportunities, improve the overall physical condition of the area, maintain an attractive pedestrian environment, improve pedestrian and bicycle and vehicle circulation, and create a cooperative partnership between the village and prospective business owners and developers. They went through with project costs. These are all TIF-eligible project costs. Came up with an estimated project cost list over a 23-year period, if the TIF is created, of $17.5 million. They include land assembly and costs for about $2 million, site preparation, environmental remediation of about $2 million, utility improvements of about $6 million, rehab, tax, district costs of about $5 million, interest costs about $1 million, planning, legal, administrative, and professional services of about $1 million, job training of $250, and the statutory requirement of the school and library district payments of about $250,000. Job training's $250,002. So that totals an estimated project cost list of $17.5 million. The redevelopment project can include all of these eligible activities: land assembly, site preparation, landscaping, buffering, streetscaping, rehabilitation, infrastructure, and road and street parking improvements. Public improvements, traffic control, signalization, safety-related infrastructure, interest cost cover, coverage, professional service, and again, the school and library district costs. These are pretty standard and fairly typical type of TIF redevelopment projects. They're pretty, they're pretty generic in that it allows the village flexibility to go through and determine and prioritize, prioritize projects in the TIF district. And the TIF qualification report, which was one of their initial analyses, was there was 13 possible statutory factors to determine if a TIF is eligible. In previous TIFs, we some have been, areas have been declared blighted. That's a stat, that's the statutory requirement. That's, you need more of the 13 factors. In the downtown area, the conservation TIF has qualifies as six factors, qualifies for six factors. You need a minimum of three to qualify for a TIF. But the six factors that the downtown proposed TIF area were found present: the lag in the EAV growth, inadequate utilities, excesses vacancies, lack of community planning, deterioration, and obsolescence. And those things go over not only in, they're more recent, as well as in the long-term history of the downtown area. And with that, the summary of findings for the eligibility report shows that the area is contiguous and greater than one and a half acres. It qualifies as a conservation area. All property would substantially benefit. The growth of the taxing districts, including the village, has been impaired and the factors found present. And the area would not be subject, and redevelopment would not incur without the investment of public funds, which is the but-for test that all TIFs must pass. And then these is the summary of the findings in the eligibility report, and the redevelopment plan is a draft. And Chuck and Bob are here for your questions and any comments that you would like to make.
Thank you, Jim. And any questions by the board?
I know we had talked about going further east on Terryville Road slash Devon. There's a couple blank parcels on the south.
We couldn't get that far because of, there's a contiguity requirement.
It has to be continuous touching?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Yeah, Chuck knows. They're, they're getting paid for this. I am too, but they're, they're the experts though. They're the experts.
You could give us just a 30-second version of how you come up with this, these boundaries?
I guess, well, maybe 60 seconds.
I'll give you 60.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, it's your committee, so whatever you want to give.
Essentially, we worked off a core area. We looked at some of the preliminary boundaries as reviewed by village staff. We looked at some of the work that was done in 2013 as it looked at priority areas, and we used that as our starting point. I mean, the idea was that there was also going to be some areas within this area that would generate increment potentially in the future, whether it was through infill projects or through potential for new development. We excluded some of the properties that were in the center area as related to either newer developments that had, already had started, and some of the areas that you see to the east in terms of more residential density. We tried to keep the area in terms, again, of some of the core downtown, and focus more on, let's say, some of the commercial properties, or as the flex tech, as it related to industrial. And that's where most of the emphasis really went. Now, some of the residential was pulled in as it related to, you know, second floor, third floor residential, and maybe some of the smaller units, but the, the primary focus was on more of the commercial or retail properties.
Generally, with a TIF such as this, residential is not included?
It, it can be, but I, I think from what we had looked at in terms of some of the prior work that was done here and where you had some success in terms of some of the starting for residential, those properties were excluded for that reason. There have been TIFs where there have been primarily a residential focus, where it kind of flip-flops, it's more residential, let's say, rather than commercial. But here, it was more weighted, I think, towards some of the, you know, commercial or some vacant properties. We also had to, or underutilized properties that were brought in.
Also, although I attempted to read it two or three times yesterday, but I couldn't quite make complete sense of it. Again, a kind of a Reader's Digest condensed. What impact does this have on municipal building?
On municipal?
Municipal facilities?
The TIF Act basically allows for rehabilitation of any municipal facilities or work as it relates to the improvement of existing facilities. Any new facilities, for example, are generally prohibited to be funded by TIF, with the exception if you were to replace a public building or municipal facility with a private use, then the relocation or reconstruction of that use that was on the, on the old site could be funded. But generally, with the exception of rehabilitation, any new facilities, Public Works Facilities, Village Hall, for example, are not allowed to be funded with, directly through TIF revenues.
But rehabilitating an old one could be?
That is ineligible cost. Both private and public buildings are ineligible rehab cost under the TIF Act.
What are your thoughts about adding in the two residential areas that are excluded?
You know, at this time, and again, subject to, you know, further discussion with staff, our review of the area, you know, tended more toward not only making the strongest case, we thought, for qualification underneath the conservation area, but also in terms of keeping the base, or the base CAV at a manageable size, too, to allow for as the, as reconstruction or redevelopment occurred, you'd have the ability to generate more increment. So that was another reason I think we excluded some of the residential as well, that had already been developed.
Since there are also extra reporting requirements for residential, and also often those are what get the other taxing bodies even more upset sometimes.
75 units.
As it'll change the component and add residential and users and, you know, of their services. So generally, they're not as opposed to one all on a commercial basis. And, you know, you do have those extra reports and filing requirements if you're going to impact or displace a certain number of residents.
Right. And I think there's an additional meeting requirement, too. If you have 75 or more inhabited residential units, it adds another two months to the process. And as your attorney indicated, there's some additional reporting requirements. And we're under, right now with these boundaries, we're, we're under the 75-unit threshold set forth in the TIF Act.
So there's an element of convenience, then, to this?
There's an element of that. It's not that it can't be done. It's timing, it's convenience, it's, you know, I wasn't in on the, you know, all the thought process on the development, but this stemmed from the EDC and their comments and what they were looking for relative to redevelopment of the business area, so.
Do they ever do TIFs that are just residential?
There are some. It's a smaller percentage, smaller proportion, but there are some TIFs that are purely residential. But again, I, in our experience at least, we've worked on over 300. I would say it's probably, you know, less than 5% or 7% of the total that were pure residential. Most of them tend to, if they are going to include residential, you know, it's a mixed use with, you know, commercial or retail components that are part of the TIF district. That, that is, you know, more of a common. The pure residential, at least in, and also, I think, in recent history, last 10 years or so, has been more of a rarity.
Any other questions by the board?
Just a couple comments. One of the comments that you have in your executive summary states, "Without village planning and use of economic development resources and eliminating such factors, potential redevelopment projects, along with other activities that require private sector investment, are not likely to be economically feasible." So my question is, if they're not economically feasible without public funds to help them, what's the probability of them becoming economically feasible when we use public funds to help them?
Well, again, without, you know, seeming to be too much of a poster child for TIF, what we've seen, especially for, you know, some of the medium-sized projects and some of the larger-scale projects, TIF definitely makes a difference. In some cases, as lending standards have tightened up in recent years, even for some of the smaller projects, we found TIF is an important factor in terms of making projects go. And again, this area, for the greater part, is within Cook County, which has also differential as it relates to the tax structure. So the use of TIF or some other incentive, that can help in terms of some of the property tax burden, tends to be important.
Yeah. I understand that portion. I understand that it's, it's somewhat of a shot in the arm for, you know, an area that could somehow make a turnaround just with that little shot in the arm, but I think that statement is a little bit far-fetched to think we could throw money at it. The other comment that I had, just maybe you can help me understand this. And what is the typical appreciation rate you'll see from a commercial, commercial area in a building? 3% a year, maybe, typical? Typically speaking, generally?
You know, there's.
In the regular economy?
It's kind of, yeah. In a, in a regular economy, you will see something like 2% to 3%.
We used to see 4%.
Used to be 4% in the good old days. In the last five to seven years, that has not been the case. In the last five to seven years with the Great Recession, there's been a general, overall decrease in equalized valuation everywhere.
Sure.
Cook County's filled it more than other counties, not surprisingly. So it's kind of a situation now where, you know, you've kind of hit, hopefully, a bottom.
Mm-hmm.
And we're hoping with the economy improving and with some proactive communities investing within areas like this, we'll, we'll return back to the norm of 2% to 3%.
Yeah. Well, my, the reason why I ask that question is because, in your statement here, you're saying that the value of the properties we're considering now are $18,672,644. And I would say that if we did absolutely nothing at all to the area, and it appreciated at 3%, in 23 years, it would actually be worth $36,852,000. So with the TIF, we're saying it's only going to go up to 30 to 35 million. So, I mean.
It's, it's a point well taken. First of all, one of the things you should know about our firm, we're, we're known as being very conservative when it comes to making those kind of projections. So we like to create projections that are based in what we think is, is reality. And usually, that means that we, we scale back our assumptions on what's going to happen, both in terms of potential development and how fast that appreciation is going to take off. We also factored into that, again, with the Great Recession, you know, these things are around for 20 to 23 years, depending on your final decisions. But this one, with this Great Recession coming out of this hole, we don't think we're going to see that natural turnaround in appreciation or growth for another few years. So the baseline for that growth is going to take place over a shorter period than that 23 years of the plan. So we think, we think there's going to be recovery, if you're here where, basically, you're just going to want to stabilize it and stop the decline. That's the first thing.
Sure.
And then once that basis is established, go up from there.
That makes sense. Stop the bleeding, and with some improvements, and maybe an injection or whatever. I just think that that's extremely conservative. I mean, even if it was a small amount of appreciation over 23 years, and I'm a taxing body, and I'm, I'm saying, okay, if I do some simple math here, and we do nothing, you know, it's going to be worth that at that point anyway, so what's the point of the, of the TIF? But I understand the financing end of it, so thank you.
Well, I have a couple of questions regarding your, your estimated project costs. That's on page 17, and you've got a chart. The total estimated TIF budget is $17,500,000. And my question with this is, what does this actually mean for the village of Bartlett? You know, what are these line items getting us? What's the plan here? My, my big problem with the TIF would be if we have a pie in the sky type of thing, where we think that we're going to turn downtown Bartlett into downtown Naperville. Ain't going to happen unless we had an infinite amount of money. So I'd like to get a sense from you about, what are we talking about? What is the $17 million, $17.5 million going to be spent on, et cetera, et cetera?
Sure. Again, given the fact, I mean, a good point you raised, you know, it's a 23-year plan. And with the general intent of the TIF statute is to basically identify a general line items, general categories, that would be utilized by the village board or village governing board as it relates to, on an annual basis, applying those dollars for projects. We, in the, in the TIF Act, contemplate the fact that things could change over that 23 years. That's why there's that special footnote that says you may reallocate or move items between the various line items, as the case may be, depending upon the actual circumstances. I mean, we've had cases, as I said, we've worked on a number of these over the years, where just through time, depending on the focus of certain sites, for example, where environmental remediation might have been a small number at the initial start of the, of the TIF process. But due to further engineering review, review of some of the sites, that number might have doubled or tripled based on actual data that came in, and as a result, that became more predominant. I mean, what we tried to do here is identify partly based on experience we've had in other downtown areas, partly based on some of the work done in your previous plans in the EDC, is to generally allocate those amounts for certain, and again, those are only the things that the TIF Act allows. You can't have new construction of private buildings, for example. There's no operating costs in there. The idea was, at least on a, on a preliminary basis, to identify the allocation of those dollars for things like public infrastructure, for land assembly, site preparation, things that you would normally see as part of any development within the downtown area. The, you know, devil will be in the details as projects are identified, actually brought to the board as part of your norm. What this plan doesn't do is subvert your entitlement processing or any other planning. It's more really of a financing plan. The TIF Act identifies what your basic items are, what the geographic boundaries of the area are, and what kind of land uses you generally would have in there. So it's not like some other plans you may have, you know, your comp plan or any corridor or area plans. Again, it's more of a financing program, and it identifies, and it's supposed to identify for the other districts and the general public, what are, you know, the umbrella, the policy umbrella, of things that you can do within that area. As to the actual implementation, similar to your other TIFs, they'll occur as projects evolve, as projects are brought to the board, as you go through with your normal entitlement processes. The TIF plan, as you see before you, sets up the basic framework. That, that's all it can do. It won't tell you in this plan, well, you're going to have an 18-inch water main down Oak or down North Avenue. They'll be implemented as projects are identified in the future. What it'll say is, you've got $6 million of potential utility improvements that could be funded, and it's up to the experience and the implementation of the board, other governing bodies that are, your zoning, et cetera, that would be, you know, part of the implementation.
So then this chart is not telling me that we have $2 million worth of environmental remediation?
Correct.
The chart's telling me that we're allocating $2 million.
Which, that is, that is correct. And as life changes, remember, it's a 23-year plan. Market conditions can change. It could be that land acquisition, because you have a larger site footprint for a user, and again, we're not talking Naperville, or, but for, your larger user may come in and say, I need eight lots because I need two of them for new detention facilities. That normally I would have six slots, but because NWRD changes, I now, you know, for above-ground storage, I need another 800 cubic feet, whatever the case may be. So more resources may have to be allocated for acquisition. Again, it's just partly to conform to the requirements of the TIF Act, where it says you have to have a detailed budget, but then the TIF Act says you can also reallocate. It's left and right hand. But then the TIF Act says you can also reallocate items based on actual experience. So it was our best guess at this time. The board will continue to make the decisions as it relates to the implementation of the projects. And the plan, again, I want to be real clear, it's a framework. It's a policy umbrella that sets forth. The TIF Act identifies what some of the basic parameters are. It's as silly, you have to identify the geographic boundaries, you have to identify a budget, which is an outside amount, and some of the typical or probable costs that you may allocate those funds to. And again, in real life, it's going to be performance-based.
So, but at some point, you must have done some research of our existing infrastructure because you stayed in the report.
We did. We had some information from Public Works.
Yeah. Part of our process is, early on, as we worked with your staff, we asked staff to provide us with some analysis with respect to the overall condition, not necessarily real specific detail, but overall condition of, for example, infrastructure in this particular area. And through that process, the Public Works Director was able to do a rather, a pretty good analysis of some of the, what would be vulnerabilities in infrastructure that might occur within the area over a period of time. And based on that assessment, the identification of some problems, and even ballpark estimates of what it would cost to cure some of those problems, we're able to incorporate that into our plan.
But again, should, actual engineering estimates or actual projects dictate a different course, you'd have the ability, again, through the TIF plan requirements, that you can reallocate items. I mean, we had to start somewhere. So that's, again, a, a starting point, but the idea is that over the course of time, over the course of implementation, those amounts would be expected to be refined.
Recall also, when we brought up the issue of the TIF, one of the questions and focuses was, how can we, you know, spend money to help businesses or to bring businesses to town? And you can't spend public dollars for private benefit, except for certain statutory exceptions. One of those is the TIF Act. And this would be not your general corporate fund, but, you know, this tax increment fund that could be used for those TIF-eligible expenses to help bring in businesses. So relocation is one of those, under, you know, with some limits. Moving costs write down on interest on loans and things. If there's a developer that the board at that time determines, would be something we want to encourage or facilitate. But without this vehicle, we don't have some of those opportunities with, you know. So TIF is one of the few exceptions where you can spend public monies for private benefit to spur on redevelopment that ultimately raises the tax base and benefits all the taxing.
As a follow-up to what the mayor had to say earlier about no, there not being any change, and I don't know if you gentlemen, I'm permitting directing this more towards Jim. The last TIF in this area, didn't it far exceed our expectations?
Yes, it did.
Yeah.
Our, our.
We started out with an estimate roughly of $9 million, and it ended up getting to where this TIF will be at the end of their projected, about the $35 million. It went from $35 million down to this current $18 million since the time it ended in excess value. But I can tell you, having implemented the four TIF districts that the village have and budgeted for every year, these numbers change, but you have to have a, a beginning point. And we regularly, over the course time of that previous TIF, we shifted the dollar amounts. When we did that last TIF, we didn't have site remediation and environmental costs. And as you were aware, across the street, when, that was one of the identified projects, we spent a lot of TIF money on environmental remediation, not only the grant money that we received from the IAPA, but we also balanced it with the TIF money. We were able to do Railroad Avenue Extension, which wasn't in the original TIF, but it's an infrastructure item. And that Railroad Avenue, we got a grant for, and we implemented, balanced with the TIF, or leveraged with the TIF is the right word. We put in Railroad Avenue Extension and the new train station along with that. So those kinds of generic or general terms, I guess, generic's not the best, that's the kind of medicine. kind of medicine I'm on right now. But the
It's not working.
... general terms is that you have those categories, you budget every year, you put those budgets, which you will see, we'll be bringing you the TIF budgets for the existing TIFs in our budget year, and you, as projects come in, and I can tell you, Tony, here's almost every day, somebody interested in this property, somebody interested in this. I've got, do you got a TIF? Do you have a TIF? We, it's like a broken record. We say we're working on it, there are people interested in the downtown, as Bob and Chuck have stated. As projects come in, you will have projects that'll come in, and it'll be implementing those projects and making those decisions will be the devil in the detail, as Bob stated.
Well, your medication is obviously giving you mind-reading capabilities as well, because that was my second question, as to how Tony was finding the reception of the business people, and you've answered that, so thank you. It seems to be very favorable then.
You're welcome.
I'd like to ask if I may, you said you've been involved in over 300 TIFs, obviously you've been in this industry for some time, with all due respect.
I started when I was 15.
Yes, so you've got at least 20 years of experience.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm just, I'm just curious if you, if you can recall any other situations where there was a TIF that ended, and then in what is a comparably short period of time, another TIF came right on the heels of it?
Actually, that's been happening a lot. And in fact, we've had instances where because of the change in the Cook County classification system and the huge drops in valuation, we've probably got about a dozen that we're working on right now where the old TIF, you don't, haven't even waited for it to terminate, but terminated and then restarted up again as it relates to starting with the lower base and trying to recalibrate it as it relates to either new market conditions, maybe slightly different boundaries. So the answer is yes. And actually, we've probably, like I said, have about a dozen cases where older TIFs are, even though they may have three or four years left or five years left on their term, communities are looking to dissolve those TIFs because they're not working and making a fresh start.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah. I think they're apartments, I'm not 100%, but I know there's multiple owners of the residential, not Prospect and Devon, but the other area. And I'm not talking the three big buildings, I'm talking the little ones, yeah, in that area. How old are those? Are those 30 years? They've got to be at least 30 years already, right?
Oh, I don't know the exact age, but I deal with those people pretty regularly, so I would say they were built like in the early 70s.
Okay, so 40 years.
Hillcrest, yeah.
50, 60 when this is done. I think we should include those too.
If you want to include those housing units in there, you can, but as, as Bob stated and as Brian, we have the additional reporting and we have that threshold. We replace, if there's, if it's for replacement of that housing, we have relocation costs as well as, excuse me, you have housing assistance plans and those types of things you have to do to report for the TIF. I don't, those units, although they're old, they're very well-maintained, we're, deal with those people who own those units all the time. I, they're not deteriorated. They provide residents to the downtown area, close proximity. It's not like it's a deteriorating residential area. That's our judgment on it, but if you want to do that, we can certainly include those.
The only thing, Jim, if I could add, you know, we would, in order, again, you know, you've got a certain set of criteria that the TIF Act identifies. And when we looked at the boundaries and looked at, you know, the qualification factors, again, you know, the numbers were good as it related to the footings, you know, for the TIF. You know, if you want, we could look at that, but we'd have to check to make sure that, in particular, if it is 35 years old or greater, not just 30, that that doesn't, you know, impair us on the, or the village on a conservation area, you know, that would be important, and also on the valuation trends too. So, I mean, we could look at that, but we'd be looking at it as it relates to the case that you've been making so far and a case that we think is strong under the Act, but, you know, we would have to look at that as it relates to where you are now with these boundaries and what would happen if those properties were added.
Because I know the other two are newer. I mean, I mean, and I'm just thinking in the future, I mean, this would help someone out if they want to update stuff 15 years from now, which would make those almost 60 years old, almost.
Well, you also have the possibility to amend it at any time. You could either, you know, exclude properties from the TIF, or you could add properties from the TIF depending on, you know, if life changes or you think more property would benefit. You all, I just want to point out, you also have that flexibility as you go forward to change the boundary somewhat. The only thing that you can't do is you have to make sure that it's contiguous, that if you remove property or add property, you know, it does have to be contiguous to the original boundaries. Or the, I'm sorry, the area itself has to be contiguous.
Well, I'll have a gerrymander with one road. Can you use one road?
Now, now, it's, usually what they do is they piggyback on the annexation law, we, you know, defer to Brian, but usually the kind of following roadways is kind of tough.
Yeah, that won't work.
It usually goes, again, the annexation, I think it's like 300 feet, you have to have a band about 300 feet that connects properties.
Any other questions? Well, as I understand it, what the staff is asking us to do is to direct them to proceed with the required steps to adopt the downtown TIF district in conjunction with Kane and McKenna Associates, which would be per the state statute, which, I don't know that I need to read it all, but...
We wanted to go to the EDC, direct it to the EDC, because you wanted their opinion on this, and then go through the joint review board and then the TIF ordinance creation in that order.
How did we go about making this joint review board? Where does that, how does that come into play? Is that just by volunteers as well, or?
It's all the taxing districts, it's made up of all the taxing districts that are in this area. So we reg, we have annual joint review board meetings with, with these groups in Cook County, so we have a good handle on who are all the taxing districts. And they will send a representative to the meeting, and they can comment, and they review and make a recommendation on it as well.
Okay. Sounded, seemed to be the way to go. All right, that's what we're recommending.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And that would be the end of planning and zoning. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Cameron. Final item on our agenda this evening for the committee, the whole meeting, as Finance and Golf Committee Chairman Ranky.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have one item this evening on Finance and Golf. It's the 2014, 2015 six-month budget review. You're on.
We'll do some brief shifting here.
I don't know if I would sit there, Jeff, sterilize it first. Definitely, yeah.
Who do you think got Jim sick?
Okay, thank you, Chairman Ranky, and at October 31st of this past year, it marked our six-month, annual six-month completion of our current fiscal year. And typically, at this time of year, we do discuss our major operating funds, including the general fund, water fund, sewer fund, parking, and the golf course fund. So I'm going to start out this evening by taking a look at our largest operating fund, our general fund. And you can see, and I'm going to be focusing on the projected year-end, we have total revenues projected by year-end of $22.2 million and total expenditures of $22.197 million. So we're projecting, as of now, an operating surplus of $50,679. Couple tidbits to keep in mind, when we adopted this budget, it did include significant funds for the Emerald Ash Bore, not only tree trimming, but the replacement of all the trees came out of the general fund, while the construction, though, came out of the developer deposits fund. Revenues in total are expected to exceed budget by about $82,000, and that includes the cut we did last year to the property tax levy. So the reason why our revenues are exceeding budget are for a couple of particular reasons. State income tax right now is doing really well. Our allotments now are probably only about a month behind, whereas two, three years ago, they were four months behind, and it had an impact on our cash flow. So with the increased cash flow and the per capita rate that we receive in state income tax, we're expected to be about 7.2% ahead of budget for the state income tax. Probably the most significant trend in the general fund is the real estate transfer tax. We think we're going to be about 38% over budget. Right now, we're almost at budget. I think we budgeted about $420,000 in the real estate transfer tax. We could come in at about $720,000. So I think that's indicative of a better economy. In the finance department, we do track sales, and we do track market values of our, of our residential and commercial buildings, and we're seeing some positive trends there, not only with the volume of sales, but with the increased values that homes and commercial properties are being sold at. Expanding into that building permits, I think the mayor mentioned in his report that we're seeing some really good volumes as far as issuing building permits. I think these past couple board meetings, we've had developers in here that finally want to build some properties again in the village, and that's nothing but positive. Miscellaneous permits and commercial permits continue to increase out of the weakened economy, and we're generating revenue due to that. The gaming tax, I touched on that briefly. Because we really didn't have a full year going into this year's budget, we budgeted somewhat conservatively. We're coming in at 33% ahead of budget, and I think by the end of the year, gaming tax will now generate about $100,000 per year. Briefly, some revenues that are slumping include the telecommunications tax. That's been decreasing for some time now, as I think a lot of the carrier packages include more text, free texts, and more minutes, our revenues drop in that area. Garbage franchise fees, that's cyclical. Unfortunately, right now, we're not generating the revenues for recycling that we did a couple of years ago. And towing and impound fees are coming in a little bit under budget, but again, it's hard to predict that. By year-end, we could be right at budget with that line item also.
Winter's coming.
Winter's coming, exactly. So in total, our general fund expenditures are anticipated to be under budget by $326,000. Okay. I'll move on to the water fund. We have projected year-end revenues of about $6,666,000 and operating expenses of $6.56 million. We're anticipated to have a year-end surplus, again, in the water fund of $99,165. Currently, through the six-month period, we're trending about 0.8 or 1% above our annual sales, which is good, but during the winter months, we do slow down a little bit, so I wanted to be conservative in my projection there and make sure they were not overstating revenue. But on the expense side, one of the things that we're seeing, which is real positive, for the second straight year, Elgin will not pass along an increase to our water costs. We did factor an increase into our budget, we will not assume that. Elgin's preliminary budget is online, and it shows a 0% increase to their water rates, which is a good thing. So we'll save a significant amount of money there, along with decreases in utility costs because we don't, we're not running all of our well pumps at full capacity right now. So good news in the water fund. In the sewer fund, we're projecting basically a break-even of about $4,000 at year-end. I think the significant savings comes again under operating expenses, where some, a lot of our utility costs and some of our capital outlay projects are coming in under budget, and that is causing our operating expenses to be under by about $272,000, helping the fund to break even. Moving on to the parking fund, we're expected to generate a small surplus of $19,358. Parking fund revenue is basically what it is, $1.25 per day at all of our parking lots. It's very easy to anticipate what kind of revenue we'll bring in. We're projecting $225,100 operating expenses, so $205,000. We had a capital outlay project that included the reconstruction or overlay of Railroad Avenue. I think we piggybacked on to our, our road bond funds, and were able to come, come in significantly under budget in that area because of the road project that was going in at that time. Finally, looking at the golf course, I know we've had several discussions over the past year about the golf course. We continue to monitor trends. We'll start out with looking at our revenues. I'm projecting at year-end $2.181 million, and we are collectively, in all of the operating divisions of the golf course, going to be under budget in revenue of about $309,000 at this point. Obviously, in the winter months, we finished up with our major course work there, including rounds of golf. A restaurant is closed, and, you know, the banquet in Midway tend to slow down a little bit this time of year. On the bottom end, our expenditures, though, we continue to monitor our expenditures. I think in total, we should come in under budget of $83,390. I know Paul and Phil and Kevin continue to watch their expenditures and continue to be concerned about their budget. One of the things that we've done, as you know, is we're holding the Golf Pro Managers position open, which will save a significant amount of money. So I wish I had some better news as far as revenues at the golf course. I know we put in a lot of these revenue enhancements this year, but hopefully in future years, we'll start growing, growing that due to those enhancements. So with that being said, that concludes the quick overview and six-month analysis of our five operating funds, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board? Hey, Jeff, let me ask you about the golf fund, since the slide's up on the floor. We're looking at a deficit of $206,000.
Yes.
What are we doing to help close that?
The only thing we can do at this point is continue to cut expenses, operating expenses. We've gone through the major portion of our operations as far as the spring and summer operating at the golf course. The dollars right now are what they are. It's hard to generate any additional revenue at this point. The only thing we can do is do things like hold the Golf Pro Managers position open and continue to monitor those costs. Maybe in the spring, we'll have a little bit of a better spring, and we'll generate some additional revenue to close that gap up a little bit right now.
So those revenue enhancements really didn't close the gap?
Well, we foresaw those weren't implemented for a whole season. If you'll recall, those are ones that we worked on during the month of March, April, during the budget, and came back to you probably mid-golf season and showed you, I think there were probably 10 or 15 items, how we had implemented all of them. And I think they were all a success to some degree, but, but not to close it in one year, not to close that gap in one year. I don't think it's fair to say they weren't successful. I think we're going to keep doing all of those items that we have improved and hopefully find some ways to improve on those as well, and keep looking at ways to bring in more people, keep the costs down. We have an advantage now with the expansion of the golf course to look at, or the clubhouse, to look at some ways to bring in some new customers that we weren't able to track before. So I think we're just going to keep doing what we're doing, trying to improve that operation the way we did last year, and find some new ways. operation the way we did last year, and find some new ways.
And once again, I, what are you doing? And it's pretty hard to predict. You've got March and April.
Absolutely, right.
People golf then.
Right.
So it's kind of hard to predict that.
Yeah.
Now, one of the questions that I had was regarding the real estate transfer tax. And I haven't moved out of Bartlett in 20-some years, so is that, is that a larger percentage when you move out versus move within?
No.
The revenue?
No, when, when you move.
Move within, you don't get charged.
Move within, you don't have to pay.
It's only when you move out.
It's only when you move out. And if you move within Bartlett, from Bartlett, you don't have to pay.
Yeah, so that's my point. I mean, obviously, people are buying the houses they're moving out of, but that's increasing because so many people are moving.
That's the initiative, not to move.
Well, you don't not sell your house because of that tax, but, okay.
It's a good trend. I'm really happy to see that. I mean, it's been a long time since we've had growth in some of these areas.
Yeah.
Jeff, could you explain what the, on the Parking Fund, the operating expenses, it just lists as revenue and operating expenses? What are the operating expenses involved? It just seems to me like this should be like a cash cow here, and you got parking meter.
Like the money?
Well, it is. People are putting money into it, and you'd think that, you know, how much of operating expenses can there be?
A lot of that was due to the construction or rehabbing of some of the parking lots that we've done over the past several years. I think we had $90,000 in this year's budget. That's classified as an operating expense. So, you know, if you reduce that 279 by the 90, your operating revenues will outweigh by far the expenditures on an annual basis. Those are just one-time capital outlay projects. So without that in there, you know, the Parking Fund is set up to have a surplus. We do have some personnel in there, Parking Meter attendant, we did budget for a maintenance worker in there. I can go through my list of what those operating expenses are, but the largest item is...
And those are covered, those are covered under the Parking Fund, though, not under Public Works or the Police Department?
When an employee under Public Works or our Parking Meter attendant works out of that division, typically, we, we should charge the Parking Fund for that service and time that they're putting into it. But there's flexibility there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
See, nothing else? I have something. I was just waiting to see if I was going to interrupt anybody. Getting back to the, to the Golf Fund, this is probably a dumb question, but what exactly is Midway?
Oh, that's where you can buy a hot dog or a Coke.
That would be our cash cow.
That's a cash cow.
That's a cash cow in the Bartlett bills.
Yeah, you can buy a drink that's between the first and 10th hole.
The Beer Shack.
The Beer Shack, okay. Thank you.
With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Cameron, seconded by Trustee Ranky. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Trustee Aaron?
Yes.
Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonero?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ranky?
Yes.
Shipman?
Yes.
We are adjourned.